At this time, we will call to order the special city council meeting for October 14th, 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Appreciate everyone for being here. Just a reminder, it's been awhile. If you have your phone, please turn it on silent if you could. And already got a habit, I'm over there looking for Lisa Deaton, our city clerk. Let the roll call show, all council members are present and skeleton crew for the rest. With that, we'll move on to the minutes from September 28th, 2020. Councilmember Kennedy?
Page two, beginning of the fire chief's report. The first sentence, the word should be repaired instead of prepared. And that's all I had.
Councilmember Kibble?
The top line in page seven, at the end of the sentence, it says, "The solace we need to accomplish," those should be omitted. Rest of it's fine. That's all I had. Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'll move the minutes as amended. I'll support.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Onto the approval of the bills this evening. Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I'll move the bills. I'll second.
Councilmember Walton? Any further discussion on the bills? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of tonight's agenda. Councilmember Kibble?
I'd like to pull the consent agenda number two, to put it onto the regular agenda, please.
I would like to oppose agenda item consent agenda number one.
We usually wait for the consent agenda to do that, but I'll tell you what, why don't we approve the rest of the agenda and we'll do that in a moment? Sound good?
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the approval of the agenda this evening? Okay, great. All right. Now, Councilmember Kibble, go ahead on consent agenda this evening.
Okay. Well, in light of Carl's thing, let's just pull both of those to the regular agenda.
Okay, great. Councilmember Richards?
Okay.
We're not going to discuss this, I just, I figured you wanted to second that.
I, not to approve, okay, on the number one person on the consent agenda.
Yeah, we're gonna, so we're...
Is that what you want?
No, that's, that's okay.
No, we just want to put it on the regular agenda.
I'll support that.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Just for clarity, let's go ahead and make number one, new business number four, for the planning commission appointment, and we will make the zoning board of appeals At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address. I'd also recommend that you please respect everyone and try and do your best to social distance if you are going to come up and speak. At this time, we'll close the floor for public comment. We do not have any old business this evening, so we'll move on to new business number one, DTE street lighting conversion agreement.
Earlier in the year, the city council approved a lighting agreement which afforded us the opportunity to work with DTE on replacement of lights in our community to LED to save on utility charges. Attaches additional agreement which will allow DTE to replace and remove existing equipment should it break down or is damaged through the city with the new DTE equipment. The replacement poles will not match at first, but over time, as they begin to be replaced, the poles or luminaries will, everything will begin to match. If the city desired to match with the DTE standards all at once, this will be a planned job where the contractor will remove all the non-standard poles, luminaries, and install new foundations and poles and luminaries. But going this round would cost, come a cost to the city of approximately $1,000 per pole and another $1,700 for the additional hardware. I've attached the DTE lighting agreement and possible course of action is approve or not approve the DTE master lighting agreement for municipal lighting services.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the DTE lighting master agreement for municipal street lighting.
I'll second.
Councilmember Kibble, you have further discussion?
I do, please.
Go ahead.
Will the city behold, holding any additional liability for the lighting design not meeting IESNA recommendations?
I will bring the city attorney in to answer that particular question.
Certainly. Toward the end of the document, it speaks to the idea that we won't be compliant with the IESNA recommendations. It's just a design consideration, I'm assuming for lighting, particular things with so much In the event that somebody were to get in an accident or something and they could charge us with not having been compliant, I don't want us to end up taking it on the cheek.
You know what, I don't remember.
Okay. It's actually on page two?
I saw it.
Okay.
I saw, you're talking about in the checklist, paragraph number eight, I think it was. Paragraph number 10, yeah. You're talking about the first paragraph.
That's correct, yes, uh-huh.
So, I feel like there's some reference to it in the agreement, but I cannot recall.
It just seems like if they, they want us to sign off on that, there must be some...
Oh, it's in paragraph 10 of the master agreement.
Oh, yeah, that's where I had seen it initially, right.
In paragraph...
Correct.
10. I don't know why we, the city, chose to install non-IESNA fixtures. It seems that they're saying that that's what they install, and if we want anything different, then we have to acknowledge that. So, I don't know why our, why we chose that.
Well, it's a design thing, so I'm thinking that there's, as I said, that there's standards for particular circumstances, and we've got lighting that probably isn't of the same nature there, so we need to end up kind of, they, they want to relieve themselves of liability, but that seems like it puts it in our lap.
They were very, 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 very difficult to deal with. Basically, we, we had comments, we have requested a lot of changes, liability issues. They refused to make any changes.
Mm-hmm.
And frankly, that's been our experience as municipal attorneys with all of our communities now, that they're basically in a position where they can tell us to take it or leave it. And understanding the risks and liabilities that you're, you're agreeing to, most of the communities are still going forward.
Right.
And that's kind of where we're at.
We're not going to put our own power plant in, so, yeah, right.
Yeah, and we, and we did, Paul and I did loop in your risk managers to talk about what we can do, what we can't do. We even shared that information with DTE. They made very minor changes, but...
I wondered if MMRA had been talked to about this.
I'm sorry?
MMRA.
Yes, we talked to MMRA.
I mean, they, they're aware of this particular aspect of it.
They are aware of all of the liability concerns and issues in the agreement.
Okay.
They recommended changes similar to the changes I recommended. DT is not going to make them.
They weren't having it, yeah.
We got to the point, we were going back and forth, back and forth, back, but we got to the point where this is as good as it's going to get, and we need this work done.
Yeah, right, okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Sorry, wish I had better news.
Don't go away.
So, we have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Dilg, to approve the DTE... Oh, thank you. Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
I wish to call to your attention, on page three, where it says number 13, subcontractors are reading that carefully, may subcontract in whole or in part its obligations under this agreement to install the equipment and replacement equipment. If we can recall other instances where this has taken place, we've had some trouble, to say the least, because they can bring in somebody we do not know from anywhere. They may have criminal background, too extreme, okay? We don't know who these people are, okay? We got no guarantee that they're going to be prompt and neat and clean and whatever, okay? Follow the rules. I'm just bringing that to your attention at this point in time on this particular line of the, of the master agreement. And I'd like to hear some comments from you on that.
Well, I understand, I do understand your concern, but the reality is, you don't know the people that are working for DTE either.
Right.
They're contractors technically for DTE, so I think that the concern is still the individual is what you're articulating, and we don't know the individuals that DT is going to send out anyway.
Okay, I'm just letting everybody know that we've had a problem in the past on other engagements that we've done where that line said they could subcontract anything they wanted, and I don't want to go into any further details, okay? But I'm just letting you know, and we'll probably approve it, okay?
Thank you. Councilmember Richards, could you make an effort to speak into your microphone? Because it's...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just want to be able, I want everyone to be able to hear you.
I'm sorry.
Yep. So, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion on this? Okay, great. We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Dilg, to approve the DTE lighting master agreement for municipal street lighting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? New business number two, award of bid to remove and replace concrete on Liberty Street.
As part of our efforts to make road improvements, the city applied for and received grants from Oakland County Local Road Improvement Matching Fund Program to improve Liberty Street between Washington and Pontiac Trail. We received funds in total of $32,265, with the required matching funds will afford us the opportunity to make $65,518 in concrete repairs to this road. I've attached a construction plan and letter from HRC outlining the project and bid tabulation. Possible course of action tonight is approve or not approve the award of bid to remove and replace concrete on Liberty Street to GM &amp; Sons of Whitmore Lake in the amount not to exceed $65,518 from account number 202-451-802-100.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I move on the motion, Paul, I had called Patricia on this regarding the numbers. I don't know if she had an opportunity to speak with you, or...
Yes, she mentioned that she called.
Okay, well, if you received two grants totaling $32,265, that total comes up to, was it, this was the question, you received two grants in total of $32,265, or were there two separate grants in the amount of $32,265?
There were two grants we received, and the total of the two grants was $32,265. The first grant was in the, for $2,019, a $15,012, and the second grant was the 2020, which was $17,253.
Okay. And then, are you taking all of that money out of the account? Because what you're really, once again, I'm just trying to figure this out, is you are only taking the balance of the 65,518. So, you take that and minus the 32,265, because that came in grants, and that balance is what's coming out of the, the account.
That will be the amount that we will have from the major street fund. We know that, you know, as we're working on the project, if something is higher, if something is a little bit lower, as I do in quantities, that will, after the project is completed, that will be the number that we will use, and we will be coming back for, for a budget adjustment later on this year.
Okay, now, now I'm really confused. So, you received a total of grants in $32,265.
That's correct.
And, and you want to make a total of $65,518 in repairs. So, when you subtract the 65 from the 32, you get a balance of $33,253. That is the amount, the $33,253 is the amount that's coming out of this account number, not the total 65, because, because 32 of that is, is in grants, you already have it.
The issue is, is that it has to come out of an expenditure. The total amount, the revenues that we will be receiving will be a grant that will be accredited to revenues, but the expenditure account will be that total amount coming out of major streets. Because you have the influx of the $32,265 coming out of, or that's coming in as grants in revenues, and then you have the, not only the, you have those dollars, but our dollars, whatever we put in it, will come out of expenditures, because that's what the check will actually be written for, and it will have to come out of a specific account, which is in the major street fund.
Right. So, that's the balance that comes out of the ledger account.
That's correct. And if we use the total dollars, if it's less than that, or if it's, you know, less than that dollar amount based upon whatever they see out there, then that will be the budget adjustment that they will make. So, sorry if I misspoke.
Well, the accounting is a little different. And then, when I went to the account number to look into that account, to see whether or not there was sufficient money in it, Pat agreed with me, Patricia agreed with me, there was no money in that account, in the, in the 202-451-802-100.
And that's correct. That's because I applied for one of the grants June 26th of this year, and it did not get awarded until after. And last year's one, I got the grant in, I applied for the grant May 19th of 2019. We had hoped to use three years or four years of funds to get the rest of Liberty Street done, but they told us that we had to at least spend this money, the last year's dollars, by the end of this year. So, we are coupling two years' worth of grant funds in this year's fund to get it done before the snow flies.
I, I don't know how you can pull money out of an account that doesn't have any money in it.
We will be making a budget adjustment, I thought I'd mentioned that, we'll be making a budget adjustment to that particular line item. We do have funds within the fund balance of Major Street that we will be putting money into from the fund balance to pay for this. Just like when we get another grant that comes out of the blue, we have to put money in that account in order to pay the matching amount, if there is, just like some of the other grants that we've done this year.
I get what you're trying to do, I'm just, it's, the numbers and the way it's being presented is not real clear. If you're pulling the money out of the general fund, why don't you just say you're taking the money out of the...
We're not taking it out of the general fund, we're taking it out of the major streets fund.
Okay, then why don't you just say that? Because this account that you have in here has no money. 202-451-802-100 has nothing in it. There's no ledger amount there in that account.
And that's why I mentioned that we will make, be making a budget adjustment. If I make a budget adjustment for $65,253 right now, we may spend less than that when this whole project is, get done, and then we don't, and then we'll have to make the change to, we'll have to make a budget adjustment later on. If you prefer to have that, we can always, we can always do that in advance.
Well, quite frankly, it, it's a project that needs to be done, and I'm not going to sit here and hold it up, but I am bringing to your attention that there were issues with how the accounting on this was presented, because, you know, I'm pretty particular about how this stuff works out. And I did call and try to get some questions answered, but that's okay. I'm going to go ahead and move to approve the award of the bid to remove and replace concrete on Liberty Street to GM &amp; Sons of Whitmore Lake, Michigan, in an amount not to exceed $65,518 from account number 202-451-802-100.
I'll support.
I'll second. I have a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Just to make note of it, we're approving this and can't do anything else.
Councilmember Richards, could you please make an effort to speak into your microphone?
I'm sorry, okay. We're going to approve this, we can't do anything else. But I'm just letting you know that I can remember when the last section on that street was done. I'm sure Mr. Kibble can remember it also. There was a base underneath that concrete at that time. Now, whether it was 21AA or regular crushed, crushed limestone, I don't recall any of that, okay? But there was a base under that, and they're billing us for 21AA for the eight inches of base below the pouring of the concrete, okay? And I'm just, is HRC going to be monitoring this? Because I talked to Darga on the site, and we had quite a discussion, okay, a couple weeks ago, and this was talked about and done, budgeted two years ago, and it never, we never were updated till now. I'm glad to see it happening. It's wonderful. But on our map here, our map here, the other important areas that are deteriorated are sketched in lighter, okay? Is there, is there any timetable for when we're going to get the rest of the money from the next year's budget to do these other desperately needed sections, which are lightly shaded on our map? Because what is darkly shaded isn't the only areas that need it. Just letting you know that, okay? All right. And I don't think we can do anything else but approve. But there's some inconsistencies that I'm bringing to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? We have a motion by Councilmember Kurtzwell, supported by Councilmember Walton, to approve the award of the bid to remove and replace concrete on Liberty Street to GM &amp; Sons of Whitmore Lake in an amount not to exceed $65,518 from account number 202-451-802-100. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? New business number three this evening, City of South Lyon State of Emergency.
We're bringing this before you this evening, a resolution to declare a local state of emergency due to COVID-19. In light of the recent Supreme Court decision regarding the governor's authority to declare a state of emergency, the uncertainty of the status of the executive orders and the various orders that were releasing, recently adopted by state and county officials, I recommend that the City of South Lyon declare a state of emergency in order to authorize police chief, mayor, and/or city manager to take whatever emergency measures are necessary to address COVID-19 public health crisis. Additionally, proposals of legislation regarding amendments to the Open Meetings Act contemplate the requirement of local emergency declaration. The resolution was passed and is now on the governor's desk. We do not know if that is actually going to be passed or signed by the governor, and that will be, implement no delay of any further authority conferred by Open Meetings Act or other legislation enacted. The emergency management material attached is Emergency Management Act of 390 of 1976, a resolution declaring local state of emergency to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the, of the public. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding this.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I'll just make the motion that we support the, the approval of the resolution declaring local state of emergency to protect the peace, health, safety, and general welfare.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Just one.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
I, I hope we can do whatever's best for the city. I'm just wondering if we can qualify, because we're not that big. Are we really big enough to warrant this much new changeover? Okay, that's, that's it. Otherwise, I'm in favor of everything. Okay. Thank you.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kibble, supported by Councilmember Kennedy, to approve resolution declaring local state of emergency to protect the peace, health, safety, and general welfare. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? New business number four this evening, planning commission appointment. Candidate questionnaire from Tyler Finnegan is included in the consent agenda packet. Councilmember Richards, you requested this off the consent agenda. I will allow you to take the lead.
Well, I am enthused to see we have a new person in our community, enthusiastic and, and willing to participate in government. But having gone through Mr. Finnegan's resume, as you might say, he's a very accomplished individual, so it seems, and I'm sure a very confident person. But really, I don't see anything that actually qualifies him to be on planning commission, as other individuals that had great qualifications found out when they were on there, because I worked with those guys for a number of years, okay? Some of them, they, they independently said, well, I don't really know anything about this, when I, now that they got into it, you know? And it appears to me that Mr. Finnegan's never had a hands-on experience with even building a birdhouse or reading a blueprint, you know? But he's a very accomplished and enthusiastic person, but I would have to vote not to approve on this individual. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Kurtzwell asked for the floor next, and then Councilmember Kibble, I'll come over to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not know this gentleman, but I did have an opportunity to spend some time reviewing his resume. It's outstanding. My personal opinion is, is that these are volunteer commissions, and if people step forward and want to volunteer their time, I think we are very lucky to have those individuals, and we will reap the benefits of this individual's time that he will spend learning how to be a planning commissioner. Me, for example, I had a background because I did a lot of construction in real estate, so for me, it came a little bit easy. But that does not mean that somebody with the aptitude and the ability to learn and read and analyze, like Mr. Finnegan has clearly shown on his resume, cannot adapt to planning commission issues, understanding the issue at hand, doing your research, and moving forward. And additionally, I would like to say that the city, I believe, bears some responsibility in ensuring that these individuals that sit on some of our more technical commissions receive training, which MML provides. So, there will be plenty of opportunities for this gentleman to attend planning, commission planning, training seminars, and get up to speed. So, I am fully in support of this. I think he clearly has the aptitude and the ability to perform on the planning commission. So, I will support his, his nomination, and hopefully, he'll be voted on tonight.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
One of the, the good positions that we're holding right now is that there's an awful lot of very qualified, we've got architects, we've got builders, and representative of builders that are already on planning commission. The idea of having something of, something more of the common man on there also gives some balance there, that it, everything isn't solely going to be viewed in a technical way. So, I, I think that this is a great, great add, as, as was stated. He's clearly an accomplished man, and I think he brings an awful lot of potential expertise that might not end up being building-driven, but certainly has common, everyday affairs kind of specialties will be, he'll be able to speak to those types, types of things. So, I think this is a good, a good fit, and I'd like to make the motion that we approve the recommendation from the mayor that Tyler Finnegan be added to the planning commission.
I second that.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kibble, supported by Councilmember Kurtzwell, to approve Mayor Dan Peltchett's nomination of Tyler Finnegan to the planning commission. Is there any further discussion this evening? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
New business number five this evening is Z... New business number five this evening is ZBA Board Appointment, candidate Jim Hamade for the ZBA alternate member. Councilmember Kibble, I believe you asked to have this off the consent agenda, I'll let you take the lead.
Thank you. The zoning board of appeals is a critical deliberative body, its decisions are typically long-term in determining the look, feel, and function of the environment their judgments influence. With this being the case, it's very important to have a strong level of understanding of the role ZBA plays in the fair and equitable modifications of properties that are hoping to receive relief of noncompliant uses or amendments to those properties, and to understand what hardships warrant variances from the rules of ordinances regulating the use and physical attributes associated with the varied zoning classes. I applaud Mr. Hamadi for, for his interest in serving the community, and I would suggest filling open seats in cultural arts, planning, or Parks and Rec, excuse me, or the Housing Commission might end up being a good starter if he so chose, so. But with that being said, I didn't see anything in, in his application that would lead me to believe that his understanding of zoning and the impact of those decisions would end up influencing our community, so that's why I can't support that.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Basically, I'd have to concur with Councilmember Kibble. Discussions that I've had with Mr. Hamadi, we were talking about an ordinance, an application of it in particular. His position was one where basically didn't think ordinances were necessary, that people should be able to do whatever they want on their property. It runs counter to the effort that goes into developing and applying and enforcing ordinances in the city for the benefit of all 12,000 residents. So based on, on that type of a discussion, I would also not recommend approval of Mr. Hamadi for the zoning board of appeals, or even the Planning Commission, where both positions require understanding and equitably applying the ordinances that have been developed and the time spent in developing them for the city.
Well, I suppose with that, I'd like to make the motion that we deny the application for the zoning board of appeals appointment for Mr. Hamadi.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Kurtzwell.
You know, zoning issues are very important. I litigate these issues regarding easements, boundary lines. You always have to go to the ordinance. And these issues that come before the ZBA affect neighbors, so neighbor disputes are usually involved. And it's kind of important that law and order be observed, and law and order is not just civil law and order, but it's also law and order that relates to how we regulate our real estate. I am disturbed to learn that a conversation occurred, and I have no doubt to disagree with Mr. Kennedy, his recollection of a conversation he had with you, or Mr. Hamadi. I am disturbed that there is this nonchalant about certain enforcement issues related to our ordinances, because that leads to other inferences that I could make, but I'm not going to put that on the record. They have to be enforced equally, they have to be enforced all the time, not just enforced against those that we don't like, but enforced against those that we do like. We all have to play by the same rules. And if there is a penchant to vary from that rule of law, I have seen it firsthand on the dispute side, and so it bothers me a little bit. So I think, based on Mr. Kennedy's conversation, I, I also would probably join not to appoint to the ZBA at this time. Doesn't mean that at a future date, you could come back, maybe you get some training on the importance of zoning and ordinances, and how important they are to our community. I would be open again to looking at this application a year from now, or six months from now. But I think right now, I have information that makes me a little hesitant on this particular position, so I'll join with my two colleagues on this. Are you, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. We have a motion by Councilmember Kibble, supported by Councilmember Kennedy to approve, or, excuse me, to deny Mayor Pellchat's nomination of Jim Hamade for the ZBA alternate member. Is there any further discussion? So the way I worded that was deny, so when I ask if you approve, so there's no confusion. All those in favor of denying Mr. Hamade's appointment to the ZBA, please say aye.
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 All those not in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes as a denial? Sorry for the confusion. We will move on to public comment this evening. Please remember to state your name and address. Oh, excuse me, Paul, I'm sorry, I skipped over, were we going to do city manager report this evening? Okay, forgive me. I got multiple packets coming together here, right? So, okay, we are skipping that, we will go to public comment. If you would like to speak, please state your name and address. Please remember that we do have a two-minute time limit, and also please be respectful of other folks in the crowd and try and social distance. At this time, we will close the floor for public comment, and I will look for a motion to adjourn, Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, move to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a great night, all. Thank you, everyone, for your effort in making this happen.
It was nice seeing everybody.
Yes, it was.
What I can see of you.
Good seeing you, Lisa.
I thought you were going to say something.
Do you have time? Can you get over there?
Probably for you.
No Superman in the home.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy, I hope you're having a...
Everything goes well for you, bud.
Thank you. I think we're hopefully making progress there. Yes, I'd hope so.
Talk to you later.
They'll cut out the 390 Lafayette. Recommendation on what to do with it, you know?
4200? How many people normally vote on a presidential election?
I need a bottle of Pepsi. But now, hang, come, okay, we've got daylight out there, I think we do. I would like to go to the cemetery quickly, okay? But I'll be, I'll be home. Well, wait a minute.
Are you good?
Oh, okay.
So I guess if there's anything that I need to discuss?
I think you should clock that, so we can kind of get a sense of how it's all.
I think I have 2,016.
God forbid, an emergency, I usually like to text because I know everyone's busy, so. And then you can just get back to me when you have a chance. Yeah, I can go do that.
Thanks, thanks for helping.
It'll be really interesting to see how.
I felt bad about that one, maybe.